This conference will now be recorded.
I'm not one of this. It's different here. He's new, so I got someone else to look at. Because Jim always gives us funny looks. I found out looking.
I was disappointed in my real smoker.
Fire pit.
They don't work there, but one is. The one that worked there, her dad one.
His name is Steven, and I just saw the S D E P A, so I thought it would step in. I didn't read it. I just said, that would agree.
We are at 6:30. So I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Brooke, would you give a prayer, please?
Father, we thank you so much for your love and time. Thank you, Lord, for each and every one that's able to attend to this. And Lord, we ask your blessing upon them, we ask your blessing upon the city council. As we walk through the streets. I can give you one more prayer.
Please join me in a prayer of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And clerk, would you call the row, please?
Councilmember Berenshine. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Harcourt. Councilmember Hefner. Here. Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
And Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
We have a forum.
For those of us joining us on Facebook Live, the phone number to text if you have any comments or questions is 501-259-1273.
And I have confirmed Facebook Live is running. You see, we have a different camera location this time. I think this will work out much, much better. To begin our meeting, I will review approval of the October 19, 2020 minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All approved. Say aye. Be opposed? We can pass it. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the department reports before you and the financials. I would entertain a motion to approve as presented. We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? None. I have it. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is planning commission report. We have a couple of members here to talk about a couple of different things. Mr. Lemmon, would you like to come forward? On November 9th, we had a special planning commission meeting to address some issues with the tractor Mr. Lemmon says representing. It's on.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, yeah, damn. I may well get used to talking to these and asking, sorry. We have for you tonight the final plat for Lillian subdivision, very last stage.
Did you bring copies?
Anyway, there you go.
I have a copy. If anybody would like to see a copy of it. Yes.
Lillian, is that the one north?
No, one over here off of Bourbon Street. Went up north, they didn't close it yet.
So this, this at the top of the page was the first stage, which was a few years ago. These four streets right here represent the last stage of Lillian. And at the planning commission meeting, there were two outstanding issues. One was the water and asphalt. The other one was the asphalt. The asphalt question put down at the business. Sent that to the mayor today. So the streets looked really good. The contractor was putting in the water lines for the subdivision from the lights. He's got about 75% completed. And he wanted to hold off until the last 25% until we got the roads in, make sure that we don't have any issues with our contaminating the base with the asphalt. What we're asking tonight is permission to go ahead and file the final plat with the understanding that no occupancy permits will be granted on these lots until the water is completed. The water should be completed. Talked to the contractor, Ronnie Good, or Josh Good earlier today. Josh said that the one for Thanksgiving, he doesn't finish, you know, probably by the end of next week. But once, sorry, he told me the end of next week, and I said, you work from Thanksgiving? He said, oh, I forgot. He said, well, we will have it finished on either the Monday or Tuesday after Thanksgiving. Therefore, that's what we're asking for is file a plat approval with the understanding that no occupancy permits on the lots.
One of those four that don't get street access.
That are, that is the lot, the lot, the addition, street access.
Oh, you're talking, oh, that is just common area. It's, it's in the flood zone, so therefore we take it out of the lots. It's common area. Like the owner of lot number 20, 27 will own track 27 down. It just has a separate destination on it. But so it will be a very large lot.
And they are responsible for keeping care of that lot.
They are responsible for mowing, painting, and taking care of their.
Correct.
There's no, actually, the common area, everything will be owned by the lot. We'll just segregate out what's planned for us so that when they get their mortgage, the mortgage is only on the lot where the house is, so they're.
Exactly.
Exactly. That's the way, but it is. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bruce, can you come forward, please? Bruce Jones, our water wastewater is asking for contingency to start building prior to the water being, lines being put in. What do you think?
Well, obviously, I would like it to all be finished prior to being here and also prior to planning. But. Still, we're screwed. And if they trust the contractor, Josh Good. They can get done next couple of weeks, and just as those weekends, get tested and get back T samples. I think we can make it work.
Your recommendation is allow this to be approved as final plan with contention, contingency that they get the final water in prior to any certification. Occupancy permits being issued. Building permits can be issued during that time. Council, you have any questions for either one? I entertain a motion. We can judge. Okay. Have a second to that?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Be opposed? Okay, Mr. Lemmon.
Thank you very much.
And I know you had some, I know you've had somewhere else to go, so. Want to put you up forward. On the November 3rd meeting, a final plat for Oakland Phase Two was also presented. Mr. Aaron or Mr. Moore? Or both, or either? You go ahead.
For Facebook Live, again, somebody asked me to repeat the phone number. It's 501-259-1273.
Mr. Aaron is the engineering for, representing bond engineering of the project.
Yes, sir. Aaron Robinson. So this is phase two of the Oakland Grove subdivision. Planning commission, the office here. At the planning commission meeting, basically, the only contingency was the water and sewer asphalt. We have submitted all those, so everything should be good with this, but.
So we have no open issues with this, with this plat?
No, not at work.
Bruce?
That's all. It'd be the asphalt. And I put the little thing, everything was fine, so.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions for either gentleman? There being none, I entertain a motion to approve the final plat for Oakland Phase Two as presented. We have a motion. We have a second. We have multiple seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. To continue with the funding, planning commission report, Mr. Gary's online. You want to give it, or Gary, do you want me to take it?
Either way, man, I don't mind. Mainly just wanted to make sure everybody knew about the special meeting that we're going to have on November 30th. Our next regular meeting is next Monday, November 23rd. I realize it's Thanksgiving week, but if we have business, we will meet that night. But on November 30th, we will have a special meeting. Arrest the. Regulations, planning regulations update.
You're fine. We're trying to talk online with Mr. Gary on further things. Gary, you're not coming over to the TVs for whatever. Oh, you know why? Brian, can you go turn the sound up on the TVs? There's one clicker for each TV. Is it up? Okay. We ran this probably before. Basically, Gary's want to tell me, and Gary, I'll repeat this. There's a special planning commission meeting on November 30th. Where we'll be talking about the master street plan and master land use plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's what I was mainly wanting to report to invite, make sure and invite everybody to that. It's like so chose, and that will be in the cafeteria so that we can do.
Right. I'd encourage council members to be there. This is a continuing process of redoing the zoning for the city. And we got to work on the sound out of this machine, but we'll work on it at some point. So the, and that's in the commission report. So members, I would entertain a motion to approve the planning commission meeting, commission report as presented in total.
Second.
A motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you very much, Mr. Gary.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Next up on the agenda. Slide move. Everybody sees it. Is the third reading of ordinance 2020-09. And clerk, would you read the ordinance title, please?
Ordinance 2020-09, and ordinance establishing the city award Arkansas's animal control code, repealing ordinance 0-2007-1 and for other purposes.
I entertain a motion to put the ordinance 2020-09 up for its third reading. We have a motion. Do we have a second? And then we'll open for discussion. We have a second. Open the floor for discussion.
Okay. I went here for the last meeting, and I read and heard about the whole thing about the goats. I didn't understand what's the name of the.
Well, there's the, any, any ordinance. As with lots of ordinances around the area that I researched, goats are not allowed in city limits. That doesn't mean that someone who comes to the city council can't ask for a waiver. If they want to have goats in city limits. We had that, a couple come to us several years ago with a Chetlin pony or miniature horse that wanted a waiver. Wasn't approved, but that's the process for it.
Why? I'm not just confused because there's chickens in the neighborhood, and this is a rural area.
Understand that.
People move their rural area to have different types of animals.
Mainly.
Now we're telling people they can't have a certain pet.
Again, they come to the city council for a waiver if they like. And a lot of our people that move into the city are moving into subdivisions. They don't have acreage like you and I did.
Yeah, but again, it's still a rural area, even in the subdivision. And then now you're saying that we got to come and ask permission again.
That's correct.
Ask permission to light a fire. We got to ask permission for fireworks. We got to ask permission for animals. This just seems like it's going the wrong way for us.
Well, I don't, I don't see it that way.
Ask permission for everything we do. I think as a city, we need to think about it like. You're telling someone they can't have a certain little animal. And there might be some restrictions. There might not be. But there are chickens and dogs, waterfall, and I, I mean, there's no difference. Goat's usually only yellow when you hit them in the morning because you're happy.
I learned they bleeped. That's, that's the word.
Like screen. I'm just, I was just.
That's the reason.
I didn't know what.
I want to guess. Come out.
You can, you can stand this and we'll, we'll consider it.
Farm act.
They qualify to perform. They, some of the chickens, but there are chickens in subdivisions around here now. There again, subdivision, in one of our subdivisions, you're in the backyard. I mean, there's just no difference between goat and vaccine. Or, you know, I'm just, it just been before Luke. So I don't think you can have to ask for that. There's so many other animals. So I would like to make a motion to stretch that part out.
Okay, so we have a motion. By Jim and seconded by Robin, to allow for goats. How many? How many?
I think if we, if we're going to ride it or stretch it, let's ride it to where it ever becomes a problem or an issue that can get a citation for too many years or something. We got to ride it. There got to be a little. You don't, you don't want 30 of them.
You're only allowed five chickens, so.
How many dogs are you allowed?
I'll top my head. I'd have to look through and see. I don't know. Okay. So your motion.
If they want.
Is to allow goats, up to five goats.
Five pets.
Well, goats we're talking about.
It's a big thing. I could ask the city attorney for an opinion.
Bad idea.
Because of the fact that we did not allow. I just may open this up for something else.
Well. Chris, what do you think? Can we have goats in city limit or not? Right. Of course. As with any ordinance, after the fact, we find out that a portion of it is illegal or improper, then we'll take action to repeal it or change it or whatever. It may have something that.
That overrides.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The show of shirts and the force five, five people.
Not us.
They say no goats in their subdivision. Bringing a goat, you're ready to go.
Just have a good rest.
The motion's on the table. Any further discussion? So the motion is, let me repeat it just to make sure we're all understand. The motion is to allow for goats in the city limits award up to five goats. Okay. So we have, well, we already had a second. But thank you. Yeah, we did. Jim made a motion. Robin seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harcourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will put goats into the ordinance. We'll add that to it. The overarching, the ordinance is still on the table for a third reading. Any further discussion, changes to the ordinance? Now we do a roll call vote, so let's do a roll call vote. Let's start over. Let's have motion to put for a third reading. We have a motion to put on a third reading?
Motion.
We have a second. Okay. Roll call to put on a third reading, please.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harcourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, and now to entertain. A motion. To adopt. Motion, ordinance 2020-09. With, let me explain. With a one January 2021 implementation date. Instead of a 30-day normal, this will be starting one January. Okay? So we have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harcourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-09 is approved and will take effect one January 2021. Moving on to new business. First on the agenda. Is our annual accidental death and dismemberment plan for elected officials, department heads. The cost is if you're under 70 years of age, it's $80 for the city. For 70, 80, it's $100. If you're over 81, you don't get such protection. We do this every. We have a motion to accept. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let me back up for just one second. Is there any public comment to that, to anything we've done so far? Okay, so make sure. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is resolution 2020-27. You read the resolution, please.
Resolution 2020, 2020-27, a resolution authorizing the mayor and or city clerk of the city of Ward to enter into a contract to purchase multiple wa, wastewater pumps.
Mr. Bruce, would you come forward, please? Explain what we are trying to do here.
So we're, we're still lacking 12 pumps to get two pumps in every hole. And we, we purchased several. We've worked on it really hard over the last couple of years, and this will finish that up. So we'll have that redundant seat when the pump does go down. Have another backup set right beside. And these are also for side chopper pumps, which is what we have been purchasing. And they've been working really well. I'll be careful trash really good. It's a really good pump. They're saving us a lot of man hours, and I think it would be great if we could go ahead and purchase these 12, these 12 to finish this project though. That can vary. So just talking about the chopper side of the right, it kind of doesn't grind. That's just bottom, the color, and the blue. That part of it is replaceable, and they expect to see just those components for roughly seven years. Pumps themselves, it just, it depends on runtime. A smaller station. Potentially 10 years. Larger ones. Maintenance of there, is there, it's a possibility to. So that's kind of hard to say. It's, it's more off of runtime and what actually goes through there and the amount of trash. It could vary greatly, but these pumps are some of the best on the market. We got a good company back.
Is there, what's the warranty level? For mine, but it should be a warranty. I'm just saying, I didn't know if you knew about the topic yet or not.
Yeah.
Because of what they do, I mean, you definitely want a warranty.
Yeah. I believe on the, so the razor ones, which is part of this package too, they agree to three-year warranty on those. It would be the same with the side chopper pumps. Not, not, not unless it's something on R.
Are these the ones we purchased last time?
Right.
The bigger pump?
Right. Included in this resolution, if you look at the quote, it's some bigger pumps, and also including this resolution, this, this quote is a replacement pump, a standby pump. For the moon morts and industrial, should they fail, we can immediately get a, get a pump into those holes. And also an extra razor pump that'll just be an extra one to have in case there. But what this does is put two pumps in every hole. So one fails right in a, in a hole, it continues. We don't have, we have less sewage spillage, less problems. And also, I can tell you that Bruce has implemented a pretty extensive preventive maintenance plan. So we should have, we should be having better luck at getting these pumps and keep these pumps for a long time. So things happen. But I'm telling you, this, this will be.
Just the ones that we replaced in the last year and a half or so. It's already cut down cost of the sleep. Labor, overtime. Rental pumps, all that stuff. The electric system to come out, all that stuff. So we've saved a ton of money, and even though, you know, this is, you know, 73,000. I mean, I bet we save that the first six months.
In man hours long. Yep. We're having to rent something from rain for rent. You'll also notice in the resolution, council, that the last line, council, everybody weighs the bidding process. Anything over $20,000 has to be bid out. Except this is a standard vendor we've been using, very good results, and they gave us very good prices on these and others. So I would ask council in this resolution to waive the bidding process. Any further questions? I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2027.
Motion.
We have a motion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harcourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
And Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-27 is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. It's in the resolution. Yeah, it's in a resolution, so it's part of the package. So Bruce, give us some POs tomorrow. Next on the agenda is resolution 2028. Madam Quibber, do you read the title, please?
Resolution 2020-28, a resolution to establish the annual ward water and sewer system.
water and sewer system operating budget for calendar year twenty twenty one.
How much the motion, we tabled this until December, I have a lot of questions. I've seen a lot of tackles, but I would like to add.
Well, we're open for discussion, at first, you want to make a motion to table till December?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Hearing none, the motion does. Floor is open for discussion, this is the annual Ward water and sewer system operating budget.
There are, under health insurance, there's like six thousand dollars for some people, thirteen thousand dollars for other people, six hundred dollars for some people, and thirteen hundred for some people, I think these are typhoons.
I don't think they are. Let me grab my what you're looking at is the salary line.
Yes. I don't think we have enough stuff here that is on the meeting.
Where are some of this stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, there we are, there we are.
But it's the Ward water and sewer sewer, twenty twenty one salaries and benefits with the
Right.
Yeah, so it's at the bottom where it says water.
Where you at?
Where it says water here.
Oh, yeah.
Way over there at health insurance, it's got six hundred dollars, said six thousand.
Six oh two forty?
Yeah.
That is
It's ten percent of the health insurance. Of the sewer that's above it.
That's single coverage.
So what's six thousand?
Six thousand twenty four. That's what you're saying.
It just looks like a decimal point off.
Mm-hmm.
Which totally prove the total off.
The misavvers already left for the evening.
Yeah, it looks like just the, yeah, decimal point off.
But yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, okay, I think, hang on a second, I may be able to explain this. I can't. Okay. Let's take the next to the last. Okay, I won't say a name. But this person
Well, there is no name.
Oh, yeah, you don't have names. Okay, let me explain this. You see down at the bottom of your page, is there a footnote?
Yeah.
Okay. Under this page, and I can show it to each council member if you'd like. That person's line item health insurance is six thousand point four. The sewer side of this budget reimburses ten percent. So that's a six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So that's over here.
Yes, 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 that's exactly right.
Okay. Now, what is the difference between the thirteen thousand and the six thousand?
Family versus single.
We pay family?
We pay sixty percent of family. Had for years, and I'll tell you, when I was on sitting in your seat, exactly there, I asked for a, a comparison of other, of the companies, and we're still good and good deal.
Okay, my other question is, how do these bonuses work?
The bonuses are, were approved in two thousand sixteen on a resolution based on how long the person has worked for the city.
So how does somebody get a five thousand dollar bonus?
Which one we're talking about?
Back on the water and sewer, water, with all water. It is the AT what? Have they been working here?
No, that isn't Miss Brett. Yeah, that's, that's, that's wrong, because the person right, the individual right above them has been here longer than they have, so that's probably five hundred versus five thousand, that's easy. That won't change the budget.
It changes all the numbers.
It does, but the overall budget won't change. I mean, yes, the numbers would change, the budget changed, but not by, it's not short now.
No, it's not short.
We'll make that correction, she did, I can promise she's not going to five thousand dollar bonus. Now. Any further discussion on resolution twenty twenty seven, oh, twenty twenty eight, excuse me? Hearing none, do we have any Facebook? Okay. Entertain a motion, put resolution twenty twenty eight up for approval.
Motion.
A motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Heffner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
So, we're to approve the budget.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty eight is approved. Next on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty nine, please read the title.
Resolution resolution twenty twenty dash twenty nine, a resolution to establish the annual operating budget for calendar year twenty twenty one.
This is a general fund resolution. Our budget, excuse me, I open the floor for discussion. Included in this budget is a five percent pay raise for all employees, one point three percent of that will be given to them in January as the cost of living increase, the rest will be divvied out throughout the year during our annual evaluations as a merit promotion. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council.
Before I ask for a roll call, I want to clarify, make sure we all understand each other, there was discussion there and I had about a pay raise for the mayor's office, included in this budget, as we'll make sure y'all understand this, include, in this budget is a pay raise of seven thousand five hundred dollars for this office. We'll make sure y'all understand that.
Oh, office?
Me.
Seven thousand dollars?
Seven thousand five hundred dollar raise.
It's included in the budget?
It is included in the budget.
The raise is included in the budget?
The, again, it's by ordinance, yeah, we haven't done that yet, this is just making it available in the budget, should it be approved by, I just want to make sure we all understand that, that this is in here, because there was a lot of discussion there and I about this. It was raised by a council member and, and a lot of discussion on how much, and things like that, it probably was approved for seventy-five hundred dollars. Just want to make sure we understand, so, any further discussion?
This, this budget, I would put it in that on the agenda, but it did not increase anything.
It is a line item, it doesn't increase my, my wage until an ordinance is done. Yes.
But the money will be there if it is approved.
That is correct, that is correct.
It's already in the budget.
Yes.
If not, we get it all back.
No, I don't, you're not going to give it back to them.
Look, they don't know the rules, so we can make sure the sewers stay good.
And water, don't forget that.
And water. Please pardon, sorry, gee.
Okay, I just wanted to interrupt the vote because I want to make sure that y'all understood that that was in there, make sure the folks on Facebook understand that's in there, and that's what you're voting for, so, we have a motion, we have a second to approve, resolution twenty twenty nine, roll call, please.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Heffner.
Yes.
Motion approved. Resolution twenty twenty nine is approved. Annual budget for two thousand twenty one, thank you very much, council. Next on the agenda, we need an air conditioner for the
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is a late one that I brought in this afternoon, I apologize for that, Madam Clerk, would you read resolution twenty thirty, twenty twenty thirty?
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and or the city clerk of the city of Ward to partner with First Electric, and if necessary, connect to First Internet to consider deploying fiber to the home broadband network in the city limits award.
Now, open for the floor for discussion, I'll give you a little background on this, I got a call from First Electric about this, and the Arkansas governor's broadband initiative. A lot of smaller towns and different areas have been getting grants to expand their broadband. In the city limits of, of Ward, we have broadband through Sudden Lake, so at those levels, we weren't authorized, we're approved, we already had broadband, so we couldn't tap into that money. However, the, the CARES Act expanded that and authorized a hundred million dollars and expanded it to electrical co-ops and their subsidies, so First Electric contacted us and a few other cities to try to develop a partnership in which we apply for a grant at seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars, excuse me, that would go to First Electric, and we get some of the funds for administering it. That goes into a pot in which they can then bring broadband, fiber optics broadband, to our citizens in the city limits award. Conversely, that would be, it would be, you know, brought out to the people in the county also, because they'd have to travel through them too. City cabinet has done this already, and some other cities I know have done this already, I think it's a good thing, it requires a little bit of, of, of work on our part, doing the grant application, administering the grant, but it won't cost us anything. It may benefit all our citizens. It will benefit.
Anything, I mean, suddenly, all the time you're stuck there.
We're not, yeah, it would be getting rid of Sudden Lake, if that's just, uh, but it's fiber optics, which
Way better.
Way better, we all know this.
A lot of people did permits on where they're digging.
That's true, and it would, well, this fiber optics will be on, on the power poles.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that, that won't be underground, it'll be on the, on their power poles. Well, yeah, okay. Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, I entertain a motion to approve resolution
Motion, accept, resolution or twenty twenty
Thank you, Robin, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Heffner.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Very good, council, thank you, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty is approved. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty twelve, Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, the title, please?
Ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve, ordinance replacing and replacing ordinance number zero dash two thousand eleven dash eleven, ordinance two thousand eleven dash eleven dash one, and ordinance two thousand eleven dash eleven dash two, clarifying the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Ward, Arkansas, establishing the safe salary of the mayor for the city of Ward, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Open the floor for discussion. This is the ordinance that if passed would raise my salary if so desired by the council. Motion put, ordinance twenty twenty twelve on its first reading, we have a second? We can stop. We, before we make the motion, Mr. Brooke, we have discussion.
What, I, I was just, I mean, your salary is public.
It is.
And when was that, did for a part-time mayor?
There is no such thing as a part-time mayor.
I, I'm just saying, that was the position that, when it was written, when I was written, it says that.
Where's it say?
I thought it said it was a part-time.
Now
I'm not saying you do a part-time job here or there, I know that, that's why I'm asking.
And, and that question came up there and I, and it's coming for, even when I was campaigning, I might go a part-time or a full-time mayor, when you're elected official, and you too, it's a twenty-four hour day job, you may not get contacted like I do, or another mayor does, but it's a twenty-four hour day job, you make it full-time, part-time, or halftime, or three quarters, or whatever, as you want to, when, when you're the mayor, whatever you want to do on any city, same thing with the governor, the governor's a full-time governor, but he could go play golf two times a week, whatever he wanted to.
For sure, but I'm saying we should base the salary off yeah, I, I mean, the person coming here and putting in some hours, it shouldn't be so low that they wouldn't want to work.
Let me, let me throw this out, and then Miss Chris, you might want to back me, or tell me not to back. If you put a stipulation in the ordinance that this is a part-time or a full-time position, then that's all you're going to get. If it's a full-time position, what benefits do I get, or the individual fill in the position, vacation, sick leave? Right now
I would think that you would, what I'm, I'm not against it, what I'm trying to say is if it's where it's at now at a lower area, another mayor, unlike you, that wants to come in and be like, that's it, yeah, I'm not, so I want to base it off of
Okay, here's, here's the deal, okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
You can get both sides.
Well, here, let me, let me give you an example. And I believe I'm correct on this, and I don't know, Mark Stodlo, previous mayor of Little Rock, Little Rock has a, a city manager, former government, the mayor for years was kind of figurehead, the mayor, but city manager runs the city, day, day-to-day operations in the city. Mark Stodlo came in to office and said, no, I'm going to be a much more progressive mayor, and an involved mayor, and I want the salary went from, I think around twenty-five grand a year to a hundred grand a year, or something like that. In it, though, he built into the ordinance that, that approved that vacation time. Okay. At the end of his term, he hadn't taken any vacation, and they end up paying him for the vacation. If you make this a full-time position, it's got to come with benefits.
Right.
As it is right now, I don't get sick leave.
Hold on, I'm just, I'm just bringing up the discussion of asking everybody here and everybody in the town what they think and how they feel about it, because with a full-time, not even a full-time, but with, with a full-time position, you might get more people to run for the position instead of people that don't, that are retired, people that are just not working, you know, to make
Here's what, here's what we're trying to do, so, I think we're trying to as we move forward, do you want, I mean, I have, it's not a secret, I have an additional, I have retired, Air Force retired, and Mayor Brooke had a sub, you know, income also, so we knew going in, I knew what salary going in, and I'm fine with it, but going forward, as we move forward, we are now the second largest city in the county, and the census will play that out here a little bit. We need qualified people sitting in this seat, not saying, not quoting, they're not, you know, saying I'm qualified or whatever, and pat myself on the back, but you need somebody who can run the city full-time at their leisure without having to have a second job to make ends meet. Because this
That's what I'm trying to get.
Well, this, this job, and it's not just eighty-five.
That's why we gave you a seventy-five, everybody.
Well, we haven't done that yet, we haven't gotten that yet, it's a budget.
That's what I'm saying, is that enough, what he's saying, or it's getting a qualified person to come here, it's seventy-five enough, you know, he's still under some people that don't pay rent, and I, I don't know if the mayor should be under, I, I just don't know, it's so, it's a hard decision to make.
I don't hear you say, it's fine, but like you said, that would kind of become a big, you know
I agree, but you need to bring it up enough where you get a qualified candidate, not, I mean, I think seventy-five, that's not
No, I think personally, we should wait till the new council comes in, we have two people, to me, it seems like a party gift, we have two council members leaving, we have some more coming in, and the general comment on Facebook, if we write it, they weren't pleasant, but I, I kind of would like to table this until January first.
Well, I agree with you, but I, I don't follow the Facebook vote
Right.
Because we have emails, and no one emails us on it.
Right.
And that's where our discussions are supposed to take place.
Right, and when this was discussed last Tuesday, when I left, I felt that we were going to wait till January, that was the last thing brought up. Because Robin voiced her opinion, you know, which I agree with, you know, hey, let's say, you were not there.
Right.
There, so she wanted to put a poll for the whole thing, and they came up with, should we tell January?
We have a motion on the table for approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve, do we have a second? We have a motion on the table for approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve, do we have a second? All right, Mr. Brook, is your motion still valid?
We don't have a second.
Well, I'm asking because we did a lot of discussion afterwards.
Oh, we don't, we didn't get a second.
We haven't asked for a second yet, I'm asking you, is your, is your motion still valid, we wish to withdraw it?
Well, let me just say this. Certainly want to be fair. I think that um, with the increase of the merit, maybe the other side itself. I probably, very good. No, it doesn't put them in the high bracket by any means, top salary line, but. If you have the option at any time, you can approve this, this ordinance, that's it. And you can, you can submit a new ordinance six months from now, three months from now. All you do, council votes will come in, if you want to raise it, you can do it, it won't be any lower. Correct?
Correct.
You'll be able to raise it. So, I think that uh, one of the things I think that you need to look at, because we did talk about it, didn't increase the budget. By what, we recommended the other one. Couldn't vote on that either, but that's the vote on, on the council. And I, I certainly believe that uh, probably going to have to tell you what. That if we go over the amount of monies in the budget now, that would be a tight situation. Probably pass, we already passed the general budget, so now we have to stay within the common.
Well, within that general budget is this raise.
There, if there's money there to do, whether talking about it possibly, and they've got a ten thousand. So, whatever is, it's a thing that it's one of those, that's going to change the budget.
That would, that would, because you just approved the general budget with seventy-five hundred dollars, if you increase it, then you hire that. We got to go back and, and revisit the budget. Because.
And that puts more burden on you and council. Look on this law, and I think that you can live with this. But I didn't think you could live with it, I just, but I think we can live with this, and you will have the option. You have the option to increase it at any given time.
Well, you're not going to increase it because it's out, so.
Well, you've got to stay within the budget.
Exactly, and I would mention, you know, I'm just telling you.
Well, if you, to clarify, later on, if they want to increase this budget, or this salary, or any other salary, it would require another vote on the budget, to increase the budget. So, yeah. So, your motion to approve twenty twenty dash twelve is still on table? Okay. We have a second. Okay, motion important, motion dies for lack of a second. Open the floor back up for discussion.
The next meeting.
Whatever.
You even talked about it, we make a motion, we uh, we.
You can table it till next month?
Table it till next month.
Is that your motion?
I make a motion, we table this.
We have a motion to table it till next month, do we have a second? That motion dies for lack of a second.
I make a motion, we table it till January.
The motion tabled to January, January uh, regular meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hesner.
Yes.
And Councilmember McMen.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Motion carries, we will move this ordinance to the first regular meeting in January. Thank you, council. Yeah, Eric is. Mayor's report for oh, yes, my apology. I actually turned over my feet, in chance. Yes, we need to go into executive session. Counsel, I make a motion, I need to move it to executive session, I need a motion for that. If second.
Thank you.
All those ladies, say aye.
Aye.
We will retire to my office, y'all stay here.
You're welcome to stop recording.
Yes. Stop that recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
And, excuse me. I am recorded on, back on, and we're on Facebook, uh, we're bringing this session, this committee uh, back in session, I would tell you that I forgot to tell you, we have executive session for personnel action. No action was dated by council to be announced in this open session. Now, the mayor's report. Highway three sixty-seven, three nineteen bid has been opened and awarded to the lowest bidder, I don't know what it is. Uh, we'll find out that later, it's an R dot job. Project should start within six months. And should take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months to finish. You'd be happy to know that the estimated cost went down. They'd estimate our portion of five hundred five thousand, it's down to four hundred sixty-two thousand. So it went down a little bit. And the county is still obligated, not obligated, promised to pay three hundred fifty thousand of that, so that's good. Uh, if, if needed, we, anyway, that's, that's good. Start three tab, which the, it's a sidewalk project that now has been moved finally to the right-of-way section, R dot for approval. And we're still waiting for approval to go out for bids. It's only been in the works since two thousand fifteen. But considering Highway three sixty-seven has been in the works for twelve years, we're doing pretty good. The Arkansas Economic Dirt Grant, Development Grant, remove the seventeen homes off the vacuum system, we have the initial engineering drawings, there's some issues with it that we are going to discuss with them and get those corrected, we still have one uh, easement that we are having some discussions with, that may come forward as council, or it may not. The two thousand twenty Arkansas Parks Tourism Grant, we had bid opening on October twenty-second, I rejected all the bids. They were way above our projected budget. Now, we all understand that the price of construction materials has gone up tremendously since COVID nineteen. But these were way, way over budget, so we are relooking at that, making some changes, and we anticipate putting that back out for bid in about a month. Drainage stage, I haven't got any additional information on that, Thorther Willard and Geraldine Vacuum Project. Uh, the city hall, the city hall, the city hall regional pedestrian bike trail. Uh, cities of Ward, Cavett, Austin, and Lone County, we were awarded two hundred thousand dollars uh, in this cycle for a comprehensive full design of the project. This will, project will be mailed into the overall auction project of metro plans. Like fifty-five million dollar pedestrian bike trail. But we'll pay a portion of that, I think it's twenty percent, so our portion will be ten thousand dollars. And that'll come forward as council when the bill comes in, since it's right at my level or just above. Census two thousand twenty, the final responses. Um, Austin one with seventy, if you talk about the car watch payoff. Austin one with seventy-seven point five, Cavett seventy-four point five, Ward with seventy-two point four, and Lone Oak with sixty-six point eight. This Thursday at three o'clock, Trey Ray, myself, and King Kincaid are going to be watching the city Austin police chief's car and the fire chief's car. If you'd like to come out and watch. Thank you. And watch or participate, feel free, I will tell you, and I've said this many times, it's a lot of fun, and it was, it was to bring awareness and to get people involved, and if, if more people voted, great, for the city, for all the cities, for the county, and for the uh, state of I just think, uh, I think we're going to be amazed at our census count when it comes in, I hope. It is, it is. Um, and that's and so, you know, I just hope they don't run their cars through a bunch of mud before they bring them to us. This Thursday at three o'clock. Yeah, and at Austin City Hall, feel free to come down and help. City sales tax are, uh, this year compared in January to September of last year, the city portion of the county sales tax is up again twelve point three five percent. And the city sales tax portion itself is uh, twenty-three point five, three percent. And last month, it was up thirteen point four, three percent over last September. The saving grace, as I said before, is when they allowed us to uh, charge internet sales tax. Yeah, to be everybody that has saved us and everybody else. Yes, everybody else, especially small folks. The correct. Twenty twenty-one, uh, the elections for, for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two were, were held, the winners were Steve Ronald. We come in on board, he's back there in the corner, Robin Heffler won her second term. Jim Weir will be on, Eric Holbert was running unopposed, and Anna Chetron uh, was also running unopposed, and Jim Men is back on. CARES Act reimbursement, a hundred fifty million dollars were set aside to the county and city governments for CARES Act reimbursement, seventy-five million dollars to each entity, the Arkansas Minister of Labor and Association of County, uh, counties. Ward has been allocated in their formula that they have a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars reimbursement. We have put in all our paperwork in, in a portal for that reimbursement. In with that reimbursement is uh, that they're allowed us to put all the salary of all the cops in full-time fire department. What we have above and beyond a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, we will then put into the FEMA grant portal and get hopefully seventy-five percent of those monies reimbursed. Things like these plastic glass things bought in, in different COVID nineteen items, we have the ability to go out and get reimbursement. So, we have at minimum, should have a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars coming back into our coffers, and I will address that at a later uh, meeting about what we uh, would like to do with that money. Matter of clarification, the National League of Service, uh, counties, no, actually cities, service line warranty program has been mailed out, there's been some questions on social media about us partnering or not partnering, or what is this? We did partner with this company to provide this service, should you want to buy into it, and it's opt to worry about, by no means, uh, but a lot of people would like to have it. Other cities have bought into the Arkansas Minister of Labor, we didn't, and we, uh, Mr. Brook and I from previous administrations had the ability to do all this, but there was many different companies and really wanted to endorse one or another, but this will like finally endorse this particular company. It became obvious, and then we can do this because there are guidance on a lot of things, so. That is out, we are partnering with them, if you'd like to buy into that, that insurance program, go for it. Christmas activities, we are not going to have any city-sponsored activities, and Jim, this year's Santa Claus will not be there handing out cookies. COVID nineteen just too much, as far as any traditional Christmas parade. Um, will be a traditional Christmas parade, as we've done it before. Uh, last year's was great, but we just can't do it this year. Chamber is going to meet tomorrow night to discuss what they want to do, if you remember, we turned that over to them by resolution in two thousand nineteen, I believe. Uh, so they need to do, figure what they want to do, some discussions, do nothing, or maybe just have a, you know, a parade through certain neighborhoods which we have a few cars decorated and Santa Claus and a pickup truck in the end waving at that to kids, but not any interaction with the kids. January first, two thousand twenty-one, we will need to swear in the new city council, city clerk will need to be sworn in again. I'd like to have that at ten AM that day. Um, I can swear everybody in, if you'd rather have a judge, a judge or whatever, uh, I can call uh, the judge and see if he's available, uh, but I can swear everybody in if that's okay. Okay. So, ten AM, and then we will follow that by special city council meeting, uh, like we did last time, go over a couple housekeeping items and give your families opportunity to take interest a lot, please remember COVID nineteen that day if you. And that, folks, is my mayor's report for this month.
I have a question.
We did water, we did, um, I didn't bring that forward because it's uh, kind of off the charts. And I'm not going to implement it. So, uh, yeah. And, and we, we talked in the budget meeting, and I did at some point in time, you know, we've got to raise some rates because that's just a matter of business. We will have to do that, but we don't want to, I don't want to raise rates at one time, we're going to try to, a little bit at a time, but that, that'll come later on, we'll, we'll have time soon. And do we have any public comment for the other agenda? We did, do we have any public comment out there? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, my apology, and if it's something that really affects something we already done, we'll go back. Okay, come on up to the microphone. And I apologize, please introduce yourself. Courtney? Being mis-cording by, by rule, you got three minutes.
Um, I was talking to y'all about, talking about water.
Mm-hmm.
About raising everybody's salary.
Mm-hmm.
I speak for a lot of people. Um, it, it's kind of a hundred and twenty-seven dollar water bill per month charge. I mean, very, 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 very bad.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is the, I've, I've thirty-seven years, I've not missed a time, I don't know what especially here in this, I mean, I've been doing, I mean. I'm just, you know, given, given what everybody else wants, I mean, say, and I didn't know, you know, I'll make sure I email them, you know, and it's, it's a toll for everybody. Um, I, I don't understand why, it's so um, I think we revealed in this thing out here, um, that instead of doing raises, we need to, obviously. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not writing. I, I, I don't need to say this, like, I personally, I mean, I'm in my house for seven years, I don't want to say it.
Thank you very much, and I apologize again for not allowing you to go up earlier. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and, and I'll tell you for, for everybody and those listening on Facebook. Yeah, please email myself or your council members if you have questions or concerns. Facebook, social media is a wonderful thing, but it opens up a sometimes a can of worms, that's a good way to put it, Dr. Thurman, superintendent of Cavett Schools put it very bluntly several years ago in an op-ed and then lead a newspaper, when there was a lot of social media about people moving out of town or moving out of the school system because of perceived uh, higher suicide rates in the and the school system wasn't doing anything, didn't care, and all this, and things just blew up, and, and Doc Thurman put it very bluntly that if he answered, or responded to all the complaints or concerns on social media, he would get nothing else done, and it never ends. One-to-one email, or come visit me, or visit one of the city councils, I guarantee they'll be happy to visit with any watching, or come see me, and we can talk about anything, the water rates, whatever case may be. I pride myself in having an open administration. We do have public comments, we allow public comments in this uh, meeting, even though I didn't call it earlier, again, I apologize, and thank you, city clerk, for bringing that to my attention. Uh, but we try to, we try to listen to the uh, our citizens. But personally, I will not answer Facebook certain websites, I will answer inputs on our Facebook page, but that's all. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. Yes, sir.
Certain of war rates have been I think we've had this discussion, right? One of the things that I think that people, we, we, it's not just the war rate itself.
Certain the water rates have been, I think, we've had this discussion, one of the things that I think that people, we, we, it's not just the water rate itself. We also, you pay for water, you pay for school, you pay for track, you pay for, you pay for community, you pay for water authorities, pay franchise taxes, and that's. The other thing, if you take, just take the price of water, it's not that bad. And I always cry about my water, it's hard, sometimes pretty close to two million dollars a month, because we've got as many people using that, I think, if that's what tells sick sometimes.
Your house, okay, just want to clarify.
Come by, they're just, shower, do the laundry, and so forth. But that's just the way it is, but understanding that the water rate itself is not absolutely set by the city either. I think a lot of people, they understand those rates are set by other funding companies or finance group, they come in, they all at that, what, a five-year program?
I believe so.
They adjust the rates, unfortunately, I haven't seen them adjust the rates, and they look at their ability to pay, and that's what it's facing, and that's just the facts of life. One of the things that does help us is the fact we're adding a hundred and thirty new customers to the system, somewhere along the line that we're still paying off, where we can actually reduce the rates. I looked at Mo Rock here recently, Mo Rock dispatched a hundred and twenty million dollar upgrade on water. Thank you. Thank you, they had like a dollar nineteen cent increase to the customer. You know, we can't do that, if we don't have the kind of customer base, the customer base is one of the keys to, I mean, water is coming along, I don't know what the, 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 the. Water is a growth, water is a product, you have, you have prices, which are water, you don't have one.
Well. Being philosophical, that's true. Um.
Yeah, but you still want to. We're out of passion.
Second pass goes to the city in, in the, in Arkansas, the second largest city in, in the, in the county, and, and I understand what you're saying, and other people have said that too. Each water district is dependent on its own, there are some legislation coming up, I'll give you some warning, there's legislation coming up potentially this year that is going to affect, could affect the water, wastewater, uh. Industry in, in the state, several years, a couple of years ago, uh, there was a bill in the state senate to create, the bill, among other things, would create a separate water wastewater, water commission. Uh, in every city that didn't have one, or a force attendant, and it also, um, would require each city to have a water rate study, at least every five years. The kicker was, you had to take that rate study, and you were obligated to raise the rates, whatever it said, and if it went up, and they, and the state law, if it went up over fifty percent, you could delay it for two years, fifty percent. The reason for that is, is a lot of water systems in southeast Arkansas and other places in Arkansas do not have enough revenue to cover the basic needs for operations, maintenance, or replenishment of their system at all, and their systems are falling apart, and the state has, state has to step in. Shore them back up. Rapid water firms, the water firms that, uh, that have an adequate rate base for ONM, and for depreciation, and for future demands will survive. What we don't want, I don't, in particular is the state saying you have to get a water rate study, and you have to take the, the rate study. If that's the case, then I'll just work my hands with the water, it'll be out of my hands, how the rates go up. Right now, it is in our hands, and when I have to come to you to raise rates, we will have discussions of why we need to do that, and it won't be because I just want to raise rates. There'll be a reason, one of the reasons is, we're going to try to make small increases, so five or six or seven years, eight years down the road, we don't have to make a large one to cover it. Well, especially, sure. I understand what you're saying, ma'am, I do, um, and I wish I could lower water rates, but I cannot right now, I cannot, any further discussion? Okay, announcements, uh, November twenty-first, Cornerstone Church is doing their annual community feed, everybody's invited, no matter who you are, it's going to be a drive-through fee this year, am I correct? We'll be here at city hall, just drive up, they'll hand you a, a box of food, however many boxes you need for your family, and, and go on, so you want to have a choice, whatever they put in the box, you want to get, but it's always, always good. Planning Commission meeting on November twenty-third at seven, city offices are going to be closed November twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for Thanksgiving. Our next meeting is December twenty-first, and the city offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for, uh, Christmas, planning commission meeting will meet on December twenty-eighth, if they have any business. And our swearing-in ceremony, we already talked about it, January first at ten AM, followed by a special city council meeting, that's all I have.
Was there a planning commission special meeting?
November thirtieth, there's a planning, yes, I wasn't in there, thank you, uh, special meeting, uh, November thirtieth at seven PM, so they are, the sole purpose of that meeting is to see what they've come up with, what we've come up for our master street plan and master land use plan, as we move forward, as we rewrite city subdivision regulations and zoning regulations. There'll be no further business in front of this city council, I entertain a motion to dismiss.
Most right, over here.
We're most second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right.